I see that it's 5:30. I'll call the City of Cresco Council meeting to order for June 17, 2024. Roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Busca.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from June 3, 2024, approval of minutes from June 11, 2024, special meeting, approval of retail cigarette tobacco permits for Quick Trip Inc., DBA Quick Star number 428, Fairway Stores Inc., DBA Fairway Stores Inc., 815, Casey's General Stores Inc., DBA Casey's General Store 2511, Ox and Ren LLC, DBA The Ox and Ren Spirits and Gifts, Big Daddy Hideaway Corp., DBA Sweeney's Lounge, Dahl Gen Corp. LLC, DBA Dollar General 2400, Jack G M B LLC, DBA Cresco Mart and Howard County Jail, approval of parade permit for portions of Highway 9 and Third Street Southwest for the Wind Med Hospice Memorial Ride on June 23, 2024, and approval of application for tax abatement under Urban Revitalization Plan for James Moe and Pam Cunin.
Sold.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Busca.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
Seventh Street is nearing completion down there. There's a few spots to finish off with asphalt, the intersection at Stock, the intersection at Fourth Avenue, and then along Sleepy Hollow there, there's some spots to fill in. Scott Hunnicky said today they hope to do that this week, whether allowing them to do that. They have to put a fence out by Hawkeye Sanitation along the channel that goes out to the pond, and I think they're going to wait till that building is closer to being done before they put that in. They're going to reshape the pond floor. I don't know when the last time anybody was out there, but there's a little high spot in the middle, and it's not very high, but it keeps a little water back. So they're going to try and reshape that and actually the channel getting out there, too. Going to try and reshape that so all the water just keeps going. And then as far as, that's it as far as Seventh Street, and then it'll be done. The street department's going to start chip ceiling tomorrow. So that's what I have tonight.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Police.
Nothing at this time.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Administration.
May financials were enclosed in the packet. Next week I will be out of the office at Clerk School, and we are still busy with the lead service line inventories, so we will start calling people on them. So if you haven't returned it, please return it. That's it.
Thanks, Nikki. Committee updates.
The Fitness Center met. The memberships are a little bit over 800. 107 of that is the 24-hour users. So that's quite a bit, more than I would have thought that had been. They selected the architect. For fair week, they will be closed Wednesday through Sunday. And then the lights on the pickleball court are completed now, so that's on. They did have, or it's left on one night, so they're looking at putting sensors up that would shut off automatically after an hour's use. Basically, their baseball T program, they had 248 kids last year, they're 338 this year, so it's 90, 90 increase. That's it for that. Then basically, the airport committee met, and there's, they selected the Henry Group to replace the one on New Hampton.
Okay.
Finish the resurfacing.
Any else?
I need to go this week.
All right. So we'll move on to comments from the audience. The sections for anything that isn't on the agenda.
I came here last year, Dean Ball, about at 6:50 York Street. Of course, I asked you about maybe getting some signage out on Seventh Avenue to 95th Street to just warrant, warn people of the walkers that going on, you know. In fact, I just came up the street, and there was somebody running down the street, and a couple cars came into town. They were courteous enough to move over about a fourth of a lane, nothing too drastic to allow the guy to run. But anyway, I know it's in conjunction with the county, it would have to be, because that road is technically the county's road, but I guess it has to be in conjunction with the county and the city. And I was just recently up through Chester, and outside of Chester was quite interesting. There's a sign there of a man walking, which I've never seen that one before. So obviously, there are signs that the state of Iowa has that can warrant drivers of people walking or running or such things. So, you know, it's just one of my concerns, and, you know, I'll just present again this year. Of course, Nate was here last year as Public Works Director. He's not here, so maybe we can get something moved forward, and you'd have to talk to Nick out at the, you know, county shop. I've talked to him about this before. But, and the other thing, do we have a sound or alarm system for tornadoes in the city of Cresco? Do we have a siren?
The weather sirens, yes.
Now, do they use it? Because I've lived in the Webster addition for 14 years, and I cannot say I've ever heard it.
I believe they test them every Thursday at noon.
Well, they, I, you know, it doesn't get out that far. So I, you know, after what happened in Greenfield, you know, where it wipes out a whole town, I think it should be a little concern of ours that, you know, there are 35 houses out in that Webster addition right now. And of course, that doesn't include the Malik addition and all those other areas. And I don't know if you hear it, Dave, I read.
There's one on the Blue Water Tower, I believe, right, chief?
Yeah, and it works.
Yeah. I know that last year, prior to Darryl Connect leaving and retiring, we had discussed it because I said that there should be more covered up by the school area and the new addition. And he was going to look into it, but then he retired. Now we've got Brody with EMA, so he might be the guy to talk to, would be.
Do I need to talk to him, or, because I would think, I would think with this disaster business going on, I would think there would be some funds in the state of Iowa for some of these things. My goodness, you know, I mean, I just can't believe that the state couldn't set aside some, you know, we've done it before, 9/11 and all these other things, you know, that after Greenfield, I would think that maybe they would get smart enough down in Des Moines that maybe we should have some better systems in these cities to, you know, not allow the town to get wiped out, you know. And of course, I realize, too, with people getting all this stuff on their phones, you know, I mean, you're getting alarmed, but that doesn't include everybody, you know. We don't want to see a bunch of little kids getting wiped out by a tornado because we don't have a decent alarm system in Cresco. That would be, because then it becomes a large liability.
I can check on that.
Where is there one of the school there? I'm trying to, where are they in town, chief?
So you've got one up by the fairgrounds.
Yep.
You've got one up on the North Water Tower.
Yep.
You've got one down by Evans Park, and the other one's right downtown. So we have nothing that covers that east side.
Okay.
So, okay, well, that, thank you very much for your time, and if I don't, you know.
I'll stay in touch with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, since then, here, just a quick update. So after we get through the fair, which is coming up really fast, and you haven't gotten your new little cards, we do have those at the Welcome Center in the Chamber of Commerce. We will have our next family fun night on July 5 at Currie's Edge Nature Center in coordination with the Cresco Country Club fireworks that night. So that's a Friday night. So the 4th is on Thursday. A lot of towns are doing Saturdays. We're hoping Friday looks good for us here. So Friday night festivities on July 5. You will all get an email to an open meeting. Last year, we did a Northeast Iowa Regional Roundup with economic developers and brought up state of Iowa representatives. And Gary, you were there. Rich, I can't remember, I think maybe they have been there. I know Pat Murray was there. We're going to do that again. This one's going to be on July 17. It's going to be at Convergence Cyberworks in Acora, but I'll shoot you all an email with an invite for that. We're bringing up Jim Thompson from the state of Iowa Economic Development, talk about, you know, community grants, different programs that they offer and stuff like that. July 18, I just gave Nikki the street closure for ridiculous days. That's when the retailers would like to do ridiculous days for downtown for that day. So we'll see how many other vendors we can get and how large that could look again this year. So that'll be on July 18. That's a Thursday. And then we'll be rolling right into the flying breakfast and fine art show scheduled for August 4. That's Sunday, August 4, and then, before you know it, Harvest House will be here 23rd, 24th, and 25th of August. So a lot rolling up. I know we're all focused on getting to and getting through the fair, but after that, it keeps on rolling. So, thanks.
Thanks.
If there's no other comments, we'll move into new business. Item number one, Dave Goshen, the Theater Commission to update on Scene Shop.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. As you know, the preliminary numbers in the Scene Shop that we had at the end of last year, when this year were a little over $1,000. When we started looking at those numbers and looking at the building in general, what it was, we needed to pump the brakes a little bit and reevaluate this. We brought the architect back in, redesigned it to a simpler layout for what we actually need. We don't need all the bells and whistles. We just need a slab upgrade, walls and ceiling and some bathrooms. I reached out to CBS to get a budget bid to just see what the preliminary numbers would look like now to give to our architect, and we were at about $450 with that. So I looked at the budget bids and took electrical, for example, that they had budgeted about $50,000 for, and actually got another budget bid from a local electrician for $18.00. So I feel this building could be brought in, given under that $500,000 award, and I want to proceed, talk to this commissioner or the council about proceeding with, talk to the architect to have him actually put the building together in a plan and set it out for actual bids, so we can hit the ball roll on this.
Do we still have that grant money?
We do, until next year. And we have other monies already allocated, which, Wendy, where are we at with that roughly?
It's in the.
$201,613.
Yeah. So we're maybe almost halfway there, which I think is a good, good start. And we haven't started our fundraising yet either, which we're going to actively, have talked about and actively be on top of when we start seeing the numbers and where we're at. And of course, like we did with this projection at that time, we went above and beyond what we needed. And that's what we're going to plan to do here, is go past what we want to look for. So we can do extra things if we can, ice seats and stuff like that that we desperately need. So, yeah, that's what the commission is today.
Is that a part of our stage two with the architect that we've already paid for and improved?
No, I believe you guys paid for the renderings.
Yeah, these are the next step we need to get, the actual schematics.
Yeah, Asbeld, we need Asbeld's, bid it off of them, get a finite number.
Did we, did we have a number for that with the architect? I can't remember.
Also a part of that initial process at that time, but I think we do have that number.
Well, she's getting that. So you said bare bones, slab, bathrooms. I thought one of the big things was the elevator.
It's a, it's a lift.
Oh, well.
Yeah, just a lift. It's nothing fancy.
But that's part of what you're thinking?
That's part of it as well, yes. Yes. HVAC, plumbing, electrical, site prep, concrete, always in that $450 budget bid, so.
It looks like we already paid the architect, 17.5.
Yes.
If he's not cheap, is he?
No.
So we, do we need a motion to go to the next step here?
Yes.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Can I ask a question? This could be rather quick. What do we think we can raise yet?
I'm looking at a figure here, $410,000. You said you haven't actively gone out and started.
No, and the reason we haven't is because there's no way this building's going to go at $800,000, $700,000. So that's why we haven't. We needed to get closer to, is this our project or not? Because we all knew those numbers were just outrageous.
Yeah.
For this town. Well, they're all the big city numbers, and this is a big city number project, so.
Well, how much do you think you can raise?
I think we can get $250,000, $300,000.
That commitment from the city would be what then?
So if they hit, if they hit the 300, they would have it fully funded.
Yeah, I've sat in on the meetings. I don't know how you can cut the building down anymore. I mean, it is bare bones.
Yeah.
It was pretty basic in the first place. I don't know why the guy got so crazy on the price, Elizabeth.
When the Fitness Center did their 24/7, they allowed pledges, so people would pledge over multiple years. I'm not sure if that's something you guys have answered that. Just with that, then the city would just be responsible for covering those pledges until they come in.
So are we talking $100,000?
I mean, if they get $300,000 in pledges and they break it out over three years, it could be pledging, we could be covering $200,000 potentially.
But over the three years, though, right?
Right.
We have to raise, pledge upfront?
We would probably have to pay for it all, yes, depending on what they fundraise for the first ones.
It's general fund.
We could pay for it out of lost if you'd like, and we could reimburse lost as those pledges come in.
In the past, we did, the marquee was done out of lost, and then the, and then the Theater Commission fundraised and repaid that amount out of lost, so.
Do we have a feeling for if there's a bad debt, if you need a bad debt provision on pledges? In other words, people pledge a number and don't fulfill it?
I'm not sure. I've yet to see one. But I think they did it for the 24/7, for the bleachers. I don't think they've had any issues not receiving the pledges that were done.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. For your, yes.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Item number two, Rick Hagan to discuss the driveway at the sewer plant. Rick wasn't able to attend tonight, but he has talked with Dave on what he's asking and.
And Amy.
And Amy. So I'll let those two.
Yeah. And he, Rick, just reached out asking, and, you know, we've, he's come to us before wondering about selling his lots out there and wondering if he could use the driveway into the wastewater plant as his driveway. And, you know, granted, it's not a, it's not a road. It's, we don't plow snow on it, you know, like a regular road and stuff like that, and so on. So I guess, like I said, he's, or Alex said he's not here tonight, but he would like at least to get a feeling from us on what our thoughts would be for that, so.
Anyway, we could get any more affinity plans, thing. I mean, it sounds like we're kind of talking about something on the matchbook cover here, you know, jotting down some stuff. Plans, figures, you know, what's, what's the end run going to be?
Right. And we could certainly ask that of him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that road is, that road is blacktop, but it's not capable of taking truck traffic and.
No. No.
And one of the questions that I've had raised by other people is, okay, as soon as there's a house back there, there have to be emergency response numbers. Does that create an obligation for us to plow the driveway in, in some kind of timely fashion that we don't now because Mike just drives over it? And, and I don't know the answer to that.
I think there needs to be a lot more discussion before we make any decisions on that. Because we're, I think he's asking access for him, and if he sells his lots, then it'd be passed on to everybody that buys the lots.
Why? It would. Well, that's what he went, when he came to talk to me, that's, what's his status? What can he sell, in other words? You know, and another option, and I'm not saying plus or minus on it, of course, is to create another driveway parallel to ours, but on his land, with the county giving him access over the ditch.
They won't.
They won't?
No. They said it's a safety hazard because of the hill coming from the east going west.
So how did we get it, right?
Not sure.
Probably before they developed rules.
And ours is up to, up a little bit farther, too, so.
So, I mean, one thing we could do is say, okay, the county won't give you access, but we'll give you access until you get 20 feet in or whatever, the other side of the ditch, and then you make a driveway on your, on your land. I mean, there are some options. He wants to know what we're willing to do.
Can he go, can he do it from his place?
Yeah, probably not. There's a, there's a gulch that runs right down, would be my guess. Is it, Dave, you?
There is, yeah, there's a valley or gulch or whatever there, but, I mean, I suppose anything's possible.
Yeah, I think that'd be really hard.
I would say it's not impossible, but it'd be a little.
Because I know this was two years ago.
I think it's wet. I think it's wet.
Two years ago, I mean, I was the one he went approached.
Oh. He wanted to build it across the gulch?
No, I mean, he wanted the same access back two years ago.
Yeah. He asked me about it, too, at that time.
Sure. Sure.
But the city would be responsible for doing the road?
It's our driveway. It's our driveway. I mean, it's, it's.
But I mean, if we did another one, there was another, does Rick pay for that, or who pays for?
He would, yes. Yeah.
Because I, I, I don't want them using our road as an access.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
I think we just need to gather more information. I mean, how many lots we looking at, how many homes, that type of thing.
Right.
You know, your sewer, your water.
I, I can tell you some of that.
Okay.
So on the driveway side, so on the east side of the gulch, there's three lots, I think. No, certainly, certainly no more. Is that right?
I believe so, yeah.
And his intent, he would like to sell them as kind of acreages, you know, small, they're what, three?
Three to five acres, if I remember right.
I think one's bigger than the other two.
Two fives and a seven.
Two fives and a seven? Okay. I'm just going to look that up.
And rather than talking about subdividing them into, you know, small.
Subdivision.
Yeah. He's already triggered the subdivision law. That's part of why we're having the discussion, because his land has been parceled into six parcels, I think. As soon as he sold the land to the Island Dicks, it triggered the subdivision law. But then the issue of the driveway arises. According to what he told me, he doesn't, he prefers to keep the land on the Yankee side of the gulch as, as his own private property. So I don't think that's part of this discussion. Dave and I met with Mike and Drew, and, and you'd think that it's real easy, because my gosh, it's like right next to the sewer plant. But Mike says the drop would be so steep that it would actually be kind of hard, doable but hard to connect them. And he said for three houses, it would be so expensive. But, but they're outside of the city, so we don't have to provide the services. And Drew said, the problem is, if you give them water, which wouldn't be that technically hard, it would end, even if we extended it out to the sewer plant, there'd be relatively little flow, so it would probably be kind of yucky water. He said they'd probably be just as cheap to drill a well. So I don't think, unless something changes, I don't think we're talking water and sewer. It's just the driveway.
Another thing I'm questioning is when you were saying like over the hill, well, didn't Kelly, Kelly McCarver bought that property next to Island Dick?
I believe, yeah.
Would they have had to have a driveway in there?
Other direction. That's on, that's on the Yankee side, and we're talking on the Nigga side.
East side. Yeah.
We're talking going east.
And if there's a driveway there, that would be through the county. Because, yeah, they would, the county has to approve those, I believe, all of them, so.
So you're saying that he doesn't, he would rather keep that property on the Yankee side his.
That's what he said to me.
He doesn't want the access in there to the subdivision or whatever on the, on the Yankee side.
That's my understanding. I mean, he hasn't said that formally in any way, but.
Well, that's not a decision that has to be made tonight, is it?
No.
Okay.
No. No, and I mean, if you would like, you know, something in writing to show exactly what his plans are, I mean, I can tell him that's what you want to see and, you know, go from there. I guess that's up to you or whoever wants to talk to him, so.
I just don't want to be in a situation a year from now, you know, if something wasn't thought out or discussed, and the city's on the short end of the, of a situation costing us money, but.
Yeah.
Mike very much brought up the issue that you guys raised, is Gary, that that driveway isn't, I mean, it's a one-lane.
Mm-hmm.
Not very impressive piece of.
It's not a street.
Yeah, it's not a street. And putting construction trucks out there might not be really good for it.
Because we may have to go two lanes to make it a street. And we would be doing that. We would be doing that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we could say that we could assess it. Well, no, we can't assess because they're in the county, is the problem. And.
We only so much on each side, right, of the driveway?
Yeah. I mean, basically, the, the east edge of the driveway that's mowed, I mean, we don't go any farther east, that's the field. And then, I don't know if it's going to show me how wide the driveway is here. It might be 30 foot wide, and then the lot next to it might be 20 foot wide. I'm looking at the assessor's website here, so.
I can see. I can see somebody else looking at the website. Brady, are you finding anything else?
Really, the only thing that I see is that the driveway that the city owns, it's like it extends over another, you know, 20 some odd feet or something like that.
Yeah, there's a second lot that's, that's west of the driveway.
But then it looks like the, like dividing line between his Yankee side and the city sewer side goes right along the Island Dick line there. So I don't know if that'd be his other option, is to, you know, build a road between the two sets of property? Because that's off that hill, basically down by where the Island Dick driveway is.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know what he explored with the county. I think he was talking to them, I think, and I don't know this for sure, but putting his driveway straight west of ours. And I think that's where the safety issue came in, and I think they told him no, so. Because there is a little hill there, and it is a little challenging if somebody comes over that hill fast, but.
Might be the type of thing.
I can guarantee you, they come over that hill fast.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Yeah.
I think we do a little more discussion. It might be the type of thing where you could allow access right off the immediate driveway, hang a sharp left and build off of that onto his property. You wouldn't be using the full length of our road, just access the driveway, the heavier part of it when you pull in, go from there.
And we don't have to worry about the gate because the gates, they're down.
I think you're right. Maybe some drawings would be in our order. Yeah, I just need more discussion.
Okay. I can reach out to them and tell them that, and go from there.
All right. Moving on. Item number three, Mike McConnell and Don Riker to discuss issues at the Malik Pond. Come on up, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I did print those pictures off to them.
Looks like it's Amazon.
Gave out.
That's our case. Uh, we have neighbors, we live up on 8th Street, and it seems like the pond is my whole backyard, basically. I mean, it's, it's cool, and we don't have any trees boarding it, or there's a Steve and a, oh, it's.
Elsburn.
Elsburn that live across, no trees, but every time we get heavy rain, all this stuff comes down. So my wife was out kayaking in the back there, and she took these pictures. And this is where 95% of my problems coming from. That's all dead stuff that, if, you know, we're saying if we have a nuisance law or something, we need to get enforces where these people have to clean up their property. I mean, we're, we're kind of sick and tired of cleaning that stuff up. We don't have no trees there, and every time we get rain, this is what we get, them big old logs floating on our property, and.
So am I looking north here?
We're looking south, and then, yeah, south, and then east, the west.
Okay.
And the houses.
And the west, okay.
Yeah, we get all kinds of debris that floats down into the pond. It comes down to the sewer system. We understand that. We've got plastic bottles in there. We got all kinds of toys and stuff that float down there. Not concerned about that. I go down in there every winter, when it's frozen. This last winter, I got a four-bike trailer. I filled it up to about a quarter or full, just with all that debris that floats down. We're not complaining about that. Okay. We're complaining about the trees that float down.
And the pictures pretty much describe, that's all dead in there. That can be bended up, cleaned up. There's absolutely no reason why that can't be.
And this is just on the pond on your end, correct?
Right. It's on the, yep.
So I think where we left it last meeting.
There is a ordinance, isn't there, for nuisance and?
For nuisance and stuff, and, and some of, some of, some of the stuff that I've worked with the city attorney on, too, between neighbors sometimes becomes a, becomes a civil issue between neighbors. And I think Alex and I talked here for a little bit, and we talked about maybe we're going to reach out to our attorneys in Des Moines and just get. and just get verification on what the whole waterway back there is and what our responsibility is and homeowners and stuff like that.
Yeah, cause the easement that was set for the waterway back there is somewhat vague as to how maintenance falls and who it falls on. So how we left it at the last meeting was we were going to reach out to our attorney, find out who maintenance falls on. Is it, is it the property owners that have the easement with the waterway? Is it on the city? Since the city has the easement, just who does what? Because it doesn't spell that out clearly. Our, our, our attorney here in town has connections of interest, so we need to go to another attorney in order to get that. So we'll go down to Ailer's and Cooney and.
Some of the.
Yeah, we wanna.
They're saying they like their privacy. Their privacy is making our yards, our backyards a nuisance. That's the problem. And the thing is, is like the other, the one across from the city attorney is, uh, nobody can see her backyard, so they don't care. And we've discussed and talked to her many times and they just basically go like this, you know, and.
And in fairness, it's kind of a separate issue because the flow of the water is part of the easement. But what you're claiming is another neighbor is effectively dropping stuff into the water and it's.
It's on the other neighbor's property that they're maintaining.
So I think we have to be careful to ask fair questions.
Two questions, yeah.
It's coming off of somebody else's private trees, am I right?
Right.
That's right.
Into the waterway.
And then the water flows this way.
So we have to, we just have to be very.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you, I showed you one time when you were living across from me, you see.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about.
There was one time, his trailer and my trailer, we filled both up. Yes, with all the tree limbs that float in our direction.
Same with you.
Okay.
And that, you know, the thing is, is
You can't get it.
My understanding is they don't seem to be, we've tried to talk to them many times. And the one guy won't return my calls. And the other person just kind of shrugs their shoulders and says, well, because it all goes away from that and it comes down to us. And we don't have no trees on our property whatsoever along there.
We're curious what the ordinance is, if there is one.
Yeah, we, we can get together and Dave can get with you and show you what the potential ordinance would be. We just want to make sure that whatever we do as the city and as the council, that we're doing what's proper and correct per the, the waterway easement so that we don't, we don't overstep or understep. We need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and our, our responsibility. And then, again, Dave will get with you and can tell you for sure, this is what we found out and we can keep the ball moving forward and with some proper guidance. Cause at this time, I don't think that any of us in this room have what we need to move forward yet, so. But thank you.
For taking care of the toys.
It's just the nuisance that, you know, clean that out all the time and then no help from them at all. And it's coming directly from them.
Right.
Thank you.
No, thank you for coming in. Item number four, Wayne Maschek, to discuss Seventh Street West sign placement.
Thanks for listening to me. The road is done and it's really nice. It's working out good. Aaron, we are here, you know, it's a it's something that we've waited on with Scott and Justin. They confirmed that, you know, those contractors that took care of it, they said that the road is, we're trying to bring it back the way it was. You know, that's kind of where I'm at. I wish it was the way it was, why. What I'm getting around, beating around the bush is that that sign that you put out there, no trucks. Comes to two weeks now that it's been open and I haven't seen any semis. I said, oh, I'll use it when I park them on. I've reached out to Dave here. There's no livid on the road, you know. As landowners earn enough for, you know, a certain amount of money to have that road. There's no restrictions on it. We're just basically asking the guys to reconsider that sign. And, uh, and not have that sign there. I need to maybe basically find out why you placed the sign there, then maybe, you know, rethink that. No idea.
For an alley, we thought it was gonna be back past the county shop. I thought that's what you told us right at the first.
It, it's just not preventing you, Aaron, I mean.
No, I get that, but I'm saying all of a sudden, twenty years down the road, you guys are gone. My kid takes over a big shop there. I built it for.
Right. Right, the intent is not to keep any.
Yeah.
You or the, I mean, if we embargo it, then we can't be out of blowing snow either.
Exactly. You can't go out of a fire truck or anything.
Yeah.
So I, I guess we were under the assumption that you guys were gonna put it back of the county shop that sign. And right now it just says no trucks. Well, I drive a lot of trucks and the county drives more trucks than I do.
So you're thinking.
We're confused, I guess. I mean, I guess I haven't, I've been so used to government, yeah, through the co-op, I haven't even used a new road yet, really, so.
I see your, it's a change. I mean, there's less traffic, but to a point where, you know, there's no traffic. And I can see it would change without, you know.
You mean the rest of the traffic's not going down either?
Why is there a sign? There wasn't a sign before. Why is there no trucks? When trucks can actually drive on it, there's no restrictions. Why is there a sign?
So when trucks came to your business, they would pull down that street, park on the street while they came to your place?
No, they'd pull in and use my back lot and park. Nobody, nobody.
They'd pull in, pull into your backyard, back.
They shouldn't be able to use that, that road, you know, you've all paid for it. Right now, there's a sign there, two red flags, no trucks come down the road. I mean, county shop does, and that's okay, cause I understand it's, it's, uh, no restrictions, but it hurts my business, you know. It's not right to put a sign that's not, you know.
So you feel if it was down the road a little farther, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt your business?
Yeah, I had a DHR truck stop right there. He went down Highway nine, it was going to a fairo and I saw him drive right in front of me, went totally square around. You know, and that's, if that's what you want, but, you know, Sixth Avenue and Ranger Road, that's, that's even smaller. That's even more dangerous. I mean, if you guys just want to take a look, you can see how that traffic is a mess. When they're leaving, you know, Donaldson's or whatnot, semis trying to turn down that road. I mean, that was good for a while, but my, my corner is much, much wider and that's, that's where they've been going all these years.
And actually Sixth Avenue and Third Street, that's all, actually, that's been discussed, that it will get shut off to trucks between there. At some point between the last, what, five or ten years, the signs disappeared and nobody seems to know where they went. That was never a truck route. That road was never, yeah, it's, that corner is way too sharp in order to turn in and out over there and you can see what they, what it's done to the curb already. So that's, that's also in process. So as we were going through this process with the engineers and everything else, and I was sitting on council at the time, Scott from WHKS and, and the rest of the council had discussed it as far as how to handle the semi truck traffic. And by semi truck traffic, they're not discussing AJ getting to his property, the county getting to their property, the people going to Stock Avenue, those types of things. That's local haul. It's, you're going directly to a delivery and back out again. The discussion was based off of thickness of concrete, based off of the width of the road and how semis basically navigate that corner next to your business there. The concern was, is how tight they get to the electrical pole, which I've seen that hit before. And Sleepy Hollow's old property there, where they jump up on the curb and hit that because they can't make a proper right turn and those types of things. Those were all discussed as the project went forward.
Speed also.
Speed, definitely.
Speed was a big one, Wayne. Coming down that street, I mean, the constituents on that street would basically complain and they're, they're going forty, forty-five miles an hour. And when they come up over the, you know, the bike path and come down.
Where you want the trucks to go? Well, they've been using the.
They've been using the outside, the far line, the far road out there by SMI coming down along Donaldson to Featherlight and then.
They must be used to it because that's where they go.
And, well, nine months of construction, they're, they're definitely used to it. As far as getting into your property and navigating in, are they, they're not using your, your southernmost driveways and that's the deterrent for them or, well, I guess I'm just trying to understand.
On that road, Seventh Street, they, they should be able to use that. They should be able, but there's a sign right now says they can't. It's true.
And if, if they're pulling into your property, I wouldn't think that that would be necessarily a problem. I mean, there's two driveways and three hundred feet that goes into your ninety feet of, of rear parking area there. That, there's three hundred feet straight away to get into your ninety feet of parking area.
Ideally, that's where you want them to go. When I said absent, you know, over, over the winter, I was worried that, you know, trucks might clip that, but now there's, it's the way it was. That's how I see it. Should go back to my work, but I didn't have a sign there. And that's where it's a deterrent. And I can just see it's, it's not what it was. I mean, granted, H and S is gone or State House is gone. I think the sign is a deterrent that should be reconsidered.
So just hypothetically, and I have no idea if this is legal, if we put up a sign that said, no truck traffic past seventy feet or something like that.
But you, you're not with this family, this boy.
Seventy feet ain't getting nowhere near my shit. But, okay, let's say, let's say somebody comes in, buys a Sleepy Hollow or H and S. Trucking company, whatever, let's open our horizons here. Okay, so. Come up here, come up. So, let's say if you never know what, gee, who knows? We don't know. You know, maybe, uh, let's say a Dodge dealership comes in there, well, the way it's set up, he's gotta pull in next to ANW come in, same route. So technically, or you tell him not to, okay, cause he can't come around, let's say a vehicle along Highway nine. So how is he supposed to come in there when he's supposed to come back to the shop? So that's telling me that you cannot pull in there with a truck. Which, you know, I brought this up way at the beginning when you guys were doing this. Cause I, I think you should have moved it. I think the electrical pole should have been gone. I mean, I'm twenty-eight thousand in tax and money. I mean, I should have a little thing in it, but no one listened. So now you're going back to shutting the street off, no trucks. Yeah, you said I can go in. Dave, you, you said just no heavy stuff. If I have an excavator come in, I'm going heavy.
Right, I didn't say, I didn't say anything about heavy, I don't think.
Well, you back off on the weight. Yeah, I get that, but I mean, I don't even look at the county. The first thing that we ask, I, me and Nick, everybody asks, we asked this a lot before you guys did this. And that's why I pushed for this. Now we're, now we're back to square one. And I know what you're, me and Razam about, about it now, but all of a sudden you guys are gone in twenty years. I sell my business. Well, if I have a trucking business, I want to buy my building. But he ain't gonna want to buy that, there's no way. And I get where he's coming from on that stuff. I guess that's what I'm looking at too. You know, we still gotta look at the future. I mean, everybody does. I mean, we're trying to progress Cresco, right? So shutting stuff like that down, shutting like a business owner coming to buy H and S or whatever it is now, saying, okay, there's, we can't get trucks down the street, so why, why should we come and buy this? You know, I mean, I thought we were putting that sign way back. That's what we say the point, but I mean, in the person's mind, coming through town that's never been in Cresco, wanting to turn on that street, he's not gonna.
You know, well, it sounds like we can only ban trucks if we want to do selective enforcement. Like certain people we can ticket, but we can't ticket the county. We can't ticket you. I mean, we got kind of two sets of rules.
Well, but if the law is clear, if you put up a no truck sign, but that's the only way for them to get, I mean, let's say we put up a no truck sign on, on Elvis Street. But that's the only way for them to get to Atomic to deliver whatever they're delivering. They can do it. I mean, as I recall the law, that was pretty clear. So you're in the clear, the county's in the clear, no matter what. We could post no trucks to our hearts content. Wayne is a whole nother problem because in theory, in theory, they could come off of Highway nine. But what you're saying is that may be difficult or they're not proceeding that or something. Is that?
This is the beginning. I'm just saying, I never knew about the sign coming up. I would not hate it. Because I just want it back the way it was. Well, why is it that they can't come down that road? They've always come down that road.
Well, because they.
The discussion was to keep forty, fifty semis a day off of that intersection, off of that road. Beaten down all the way to Featherlight and Donaldson's. You provided an access now going through Calvary on that road and coming back in. I think most of your semis from the west have, that's just, they're gonna migrate to that because that's the path they've used for the last year.
It's okay livestock market here. I mean, they're not allowed to do it either. Cause that, that is tough.
It's, it's any deliveries that go, say, somebody's coming to you or you sold your, your property, cause you brought it up. You, you sold your property to a truck, a trucking company. They have every right to be up and down that, cause that's a local haul. And a local haul being, you're going from Highway nine to your delivery location or your shop location or whatever it may be. They have every right to gain access to that, to their building. It's the FedEx, the DHL, the, the trucks that are hammering up and down that road and not paying attention to where they're going when they go to Featherlight or if they go to Donaldson or to us or Loomline. It's, it's to prevent them from running up and down that road and exceeding the speed limit and the complaints that we've had from the people that live in the area. That's the concern.
And I understand it, I just down the road, we have to make sure.
No, no.
You know, cause all of a sudden the police sit there and say, no, we're shutting this down. This is done. You know, you, you have one, two businesses there. County is a business with, you know, and there's a lot of trucks that come in out of there plus the livestock market.
And then there's no way that we as the city of Cresco could ever shut that down to the county, to you, to anyone that wanted, that wanted or that needed access to complete their delivery or to go to their job or to go to, go to their shop or to.
Is a semi able to drive on that road?
On that road? The way it's set up, the way it's set up, no, but what's preventing them from coming right off of Highway nine and steering into your business?
I got three entrances there. You got a semi coming in there and that's good.
So what's Wayne asking and me asking also now? Can we just move the sign up to the gravel that goes to the livestock market right past there? So if a truck has to come in, it can go down that gravel.
So what, what happens when you have a semi that comes up to there and doesn't realize that he can't go any farther? And there's a semi sitting here filling up with livestock?
Exactly. I had to bring them all winter long.
No, I.
Everybody said that, that street was gonna be open for me and I complained, I didn't complain at all until I got stuck with my semi coming through the co-op that one day with a snowstorm. And so I had to come back around and there was a livestock trailer waiting there for me. I, I, you know, I was very good about everything. Cause I, I get, I mean, instruction two, so I wasn't gonna be one of them guys that fight you, but yes, I get that, but he'll have to wait till the livestock trailer's loaded, just like I did. I mean, but that's all Wayne's asking. If, you know, to deter people from coming in, can we move the sign back past?
But what I granted easement to Dollar Tree, his semi comes out on Seventh Street. That's what it was when I sold it to them. I'm sure that's what they expect to be able to do.
Say that again, Wayne.
Just to swing back in my block and grant an easement to do their trucks loading and then they exit Seventh Street.
So they, they load in the back of their building and they come off? I guess Seventh Street probably hasn't been open enough for that, but.
They will. I mean, that's what they're supposed to. They're, they're sometimes coming earlier, you know, but, you know.
But, so.
That's, that's what he's.
He's planning.
that, that's what, you know, and that was available to me until you guys ended the street, and now I can't.
I gotta take it over in West Union, same thing, I mean, I had to go, so we turned out by the courthouse and all that, you know, I, so I parked, trying to figure out what I was gonna do, and I turned on, I see no truck sign, so my lift unloaded, well, then the guy came out there and let me have it, because I was driving my lift up there, well, when was I supposed to hear a billion dollar general in West Union for these guys, and I'm trying to get my lift to this spot, and it's the same concept, I, I don't know, it's, you're caught between, you know, hard place, I just...
One concern I got though, too, is when you're talking about A&amp;W, and, okay, if we lift the sign to say no trucks, and let's say they're coming down from, from the north, and they're, they're coming down and they park right, right across, you know, on the street, you know, by H&amp;S, and they don't pull in your lot, they park on the street, and they're going in to get some food, and then another one comes around the corner, and they're gonna stop, and they park out on the street, so we got both sides of the street covered with a semi, and you, when you're coming up to the sign, you can't see around the semis.
That's never happened, never seen it.
There's been trucks parking on that side road for years, Wayne.
How about if you do this, if you want to keep the signs as is, like once you put up, we measure it out to that driveway and say no trucks passed beyond 287 feet, or whatever it is, maybe you can do something like that.
I'd want to see that, Jim.
Do you think that if, by moving that sign, like, say, you talked about moving it down to the, to the Sail Barn Road?
Yes, if you put a corner, say, all trucks must take a left here, you don't go back around. I, I don't, you know, I, I get it, you, you said straight off from the beginning that we're okay, I get it for his business, I, I'm nervous about the future, you know, 20 years down.
I like the idea of that.
That whole intersection is, is, in theory, is wrong, with all the traffic coming through there from, from the south, the north, you got your place, you got Dollar Tree, you got Fisk, you got, I mean, and then you throw in Donaldson's and Featherlight getting out of work, and then have semis in the middle of that, trying to turn it out of there, we've all watched it for years. It's, I, I agree, it's probably impacting you somewhat, but if we move it...
Nobody's gonna buy that property across the street from me.
Can I throw a chime in on this? If you guys will put that weight restriction right past the county shop, actually put a weight restriction on that road, I think it would go on like a Google map and all that stuff, and it would deter any of those through trucks from trying to go through there. So at the intersection, you could put a, you know, 300 feet ahead, weight restriction, you know, every time the state does a width restriction, you know, in Iowa, there's gonna be a width restriction, that goes on Google Maps, so when a trucker types it in, they know they can't go that way. So all these guys could go up to the county shop, at the county shop, you actually implement a legitimate weight restriction, that would go on every mapping software out there, so any of those trucks that are trying to go to Donaldson's, Featherlight, any of that stuff, they're gonna go right off the get-go, they can't go that far.
But you'd have to put 10,000 or less of them, you know, in a gas truck.
Right, that would also limit our own trucks, though, too, for snow cleaning and plowing.
Let's just, we gotta think it over, there's just a lot of variables, I don't think we can do anything tonight.
Could we put a sign up there by, by the Stockyard Avenue and say, "This is not a truck route, semis are not allowed beyond this point," and then put one on the other end, too, over by Featherlight, that this is not a truck route, semis are not, that would help out the residential people.
It would.
People could park down there by the A&amp;W, but when they got up the street, and they saw that sign, they know they couldn't go any further, they'd have to turn left on Stock Avenue or whatever.
Tim, is there a way that you could put a no-through-truck-traffic sign? Is there a way to enforce that properly?
Well, I know, didn't you reach out, and some of that's kind of tough, do Dave?
Some of it is, I don't know if we talked about the through-truck-traffic, the no-through-truck-traffic. I can reach out and ask him that.
Is that the DOT?
Well, I'm sorry?
Was that the Department of Transportation?
Yeah, yeah.
Because if it's, if it's as simple as putting up a sign that just says no-through-truck-traffic, then it solves our problems and we're done.
You mean, right on the same place where the signs are?
Yeah.
I, I think, if I were a trucker, I would think that, that I'm not going through, I'm not going to Lime Springs, I'm not going to Minnesota, I'm just going to Donaldson's. Sounds like I'm allowed.
Is there a sign out there for, by a semi that says?
Uh, no, no, like a truck route? No, no, and, and, yeah, and that, that's, that's something that I talked with the gentleman from the DOT with, and, and they would help us do that if that's what we wanted to do.
It does point to the industrial park.
Yeah.
There is something...
No, when you're on Highway 9 going west, I'm, going west, I'm not sure about coming east, yeah, so right by Campsite, there's a sign that points Erickson.
Truck traffic, yeah.
It doesn't say truck traffic, it just says industrial park that way, when you get up past, yeah, when you get past the cemetery and it turns to gravel, then it does point and label the businesses to.
Wayne, I got a question, just to make sure I understand, so you think what's impeding the trucks from coming in is the no-truck sign by the road, if it was past your driveway, you wouldn't think it would, it's not gonna impede your business?
Right, right there in the face, I mean, I saw that one truck, I mean, and then I just, there is no trucks parking in my lot, I mean, when I bought it as a Hardee's, it said truck track, you know, truck parking in the back, you know, I got room for it, you know?
There was a sign that said that?
I think they look at signs, I mean, they, I said, no, we're not parking, nobody parks overnight, but, but it says no trucks, I mean, I was waiting to see what happens when the races got out, and it didn't happen, because we can't see.
Yeah, you're thinking that stops, the no-truck-traffic or no-truck sign is stopping from people coming into your lot?
That's why I'm here.
You're thinking it's affecting your lot?
So if it's moved north, past your driveway, that's all you're asking?
Where it tears, of course, you, where it tears, moving to his or farther back, I mean, you say no truck through-traffic, that's...
I appreciate if you moved it all the way to the north, right at that.
To the, the county shop, right?
Yeah, right by the county shop, they can't even go inside of that, really, turn around livestock market.
I don't like that sign in general, because I don't think it shouldn't, it shouldn't say no trucks, it should say something like no semi trucks, or, you know...
I see, I see semi slow down, and they just keep going.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're going to shun people off the livestock market, how many of feet up the road, it seems to me you have to give them some kind of warning at...
That corner's even tighter, too.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly...
Turning left.
That's the worst spot.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a crappy road.
I want to go back to my question that I asked 15 minutes ago, why can't you put up a sign that says no truck traffic pass X? It solves Wayne's problem, it solves every, and we pick X, and I, but I don't know if that's legal.
So we could, um, on the northeast corner of Second Avenue, if we put it there that just said no trucks, that would give them an avenue to go if they chose to follow the signs, and if there are trucks that are gonna go up and down all the time, then they're gonna remember that next time, I would hope.
I mean, you're just trying to detour, you're just trying to slow trucks down, I understand that, and it is what it is.
See, understand that?
Then we're sending them...
Well, the, one, one time, hopefully one time, they would go down second, uh, just a thought, I don't know, because I, I think most of those trucks, Gary, I know you, we've talked about this, most of those trucks that go up and down that street go up and down it regularly.
And I think a lot of them have trained themselves coming from the west.
Just to go, yeah.
They're just going that road now, so you're not gonna see them yet after a year, you know, they, they're programmed to come in from the west, I don't, Featherlight taking all their stuff out that way, Donaldson's stuff, you know, I imagine the, the guys coming from the east have been doing...
It's not the street it used to be, right there.
What's that, Wayne?
It's not, it's not the street it used to be, it's really, it's really slowed down, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's, see, how it'll be going, but...
Well, I think it's a combination of a lot of things, and the street's been open, what, now, a week?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks, you know, opened on Friday night, and...
Well, 10 days, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I don't have an issue moving the sign down, I just don't want to get into a, we move that sign down 75, 100 feet, you know, you got, you're protected on that, county's protected, but they get to a point where now they're tearing up that, that, that intersection there on Livestock Road, and all them sewer pipes and stuff, that was, that was a headache in that whole issue right there.
Yeah, and that's kind of a gravel, gravel road, basically.
Yeah, it's like potholes all over the place, it'll be...
I mean, we can, I like the idea of no, no through-truck-traffic after this point, if we can, you know, so they could turn in and come into his driveway there.
As I say, I'm not a truck driver, but if I saw a no-through-truck-traffic, I think Donaldson's isn't through, if I'm coming off of 9. To me, no-through-truck-traffic means I'm not going to Minnesota. But to me, that's a DOT question, why don't we ask the DOT? I mean, I understand Wayne's problem, I understand, we would certainly want to accommodate them, but none of us sitting here are traffic experts, I think we should ask the people who are.
So do you want to reach out to the DOT and see what we can do about that, and come up with a solution that is correct and that Tim's officers can, can enforce properly?
Right.
In the meantime, can we leave that sign or take it down?
I think the sign has to stay until we get clarification, because if you take it down, and it turns in, they just start rolling through there, then they gotta be retrained again to, that it's not a throughway. I mean, let's, see if we can expedite this and get an answer here next week.
I can call them in the morning.
I, I've seen those signs that you're talking about, Amy, out there that say no truck traffic past this point, or no tra, you know, no heavy trucks past this point.
It just, it makes me nervous that they don't know that at the time of turnoff. I think it's fair to the truck drivers to give them some warning before they get stuck driving on Stock Avenue, which is not exactly...
Well, can they even make the left-hand turn at Stock Avenue, would be the next question that we would have to ask and find out, because I know it's, turning from, coming down it and turning left, it's going to be far tighter than it is when you go right, because you can swing the right a lot farther.
I have, I got a trailer a lot younger than most.
Have ya?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look into it then, and we'll, we'll be in touch and let you know what, what the DOT says and where we can go from there, so...
I've seen those signs in the city a lot of times, though, where there's a, like a strip mall or something, and then two blocks further is residences, and you'll go down the street and there'll be a sign, truck traffic not allowed beyond this point, or something, you know?
In residential part.
Yeah, because you're going into residences, and that's the issue here, I mean, if the street can hold it, that's a big part of the issue, we just don't want all those trucks going down in front of all the residences, so...
That's how it really started.
But I, I, I mean, DOT, I like what Brady was saying, you know, how do we get this up on the maps, once we decide the fair thing to, to make sure, maybe people can reach out to Brady, too.
Aaron, we played phone tag today, was that, was this about that?
No, it was...
Something else, I can call you in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So I guess we've already done number five, discussion on Seventh Street, west truck traffic, so we'll move on to number six. Third reading of proposed ordinance 509, which amends Chapter 92, Sections 2, 3, 5, 6, Chapter 99, Section 2, Chapter 106, Section 8, in the City of Cresco Code of Ordinances pertaining to water rates, sewer service charges, and yard waste fees. Oh, boy.
Last time.
You bring popcorn?
Right.
That's when you're done, but yeah.
Ordinance number 509, in ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates, sewer service charges, and yard waste fees, be enacted by the City of Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section 1, Chapter 92, Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.02, rates for service, water service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates within the city. Number 1, effective July 1st, 2024, first 7,000 gallons used per month at $6.11 per 1,000 gallons, minimum bill is $9.17 based on 1,500 gallons. B, next 60,000 gallons used per month at $5.57 per 1,000 gallons. C, all over 67,000 gallons used per month at $5.10 per 1,000 gallons. Section 2, Chapter 92, Section 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.03, rates outside of the city, water service shall be provided at the following monthly rates based upon the water used and furnished outside of the city limits, effective July 1st, 2024. A, first 7,000 gallons used per month at $12.84 per 1,000 gallons, minimum bill is $19.26 based on 1,500 gallons. B, next 60,000 gallons used per month at $11.70 per 1,000 gallons. C, all over 67,000 gallons used per month at $10.72 per 1,000 gallons. Section 3, Chapter 92, Section 5, 1, 5, 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.05, service discontinued, water service to delinquent customer shall be discontinued in accordance with the following. One notice, the shirt, the clerk shall notify each delinquent customer that the service will be discontinued if the payment of combined service amount, including late payment charges, is not received by the date specified in the notice of delinquency. Such notice shall be sent by ordinary mail to the customer in whose name the delinquent charges were incurred, and shall inform the customer of the nature of the delinquency, and afford the customer the opportunity for a hearing prior to the discontinuance. In the event that the city tags doors of delinquent customers prior to discontinuance of service, as final notice of shut-off, $75 service fee shall be charged. Item 5, reconnection fees, a fee of $50 shall be charged for shutting the water off, and a fee of $50 shall be charged before service is restored to a delinquent customer. No service fees shall be charged for the usual or customary trips and the regular changes of occupancies of property. Number 6, deleted. Section 4, 9, Chapter 92, Section 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.06, service after hours, all water services will be conducted during the normal business hours, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Requests after normal business hours for services, including but not limited to repairs, water on requests, or water off requests, shall be billed at a minimum fee of $150. Section 5, Chapter 99, Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.02, rates of service, each customer shall pay a sewer service charge for the use of, and for the service applied by the municipal sanitary sewer system based upon the amount of water consumed. Sewer service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates. 1, effective July 1st, 2024, A, $10.94 per 1,000 gallons within the city limits, minimum bill is $16.41 based on 1,500 gallons. B, $21.88 per 1,000 gallons outside of city limits, minimum bill is $32.82 based on 1,500 gallons. C, $10.94 per 1,000 gallons for high-volume users that are subject to industrial sewer agreements within the city. D, $7.20 per pound per day, BOD 5, times 30-day average, BOD 5, PPD for users subject to industrial sewer rental agreements with the city where BOD 5 refers to biochemical oxygen demand. Section 6, Chapter 106, Section 8, 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 106.08, collection fees, the collection and disposal of solid waste as provided by this chapter are declared to be beneficial to the property or served eligible to be served, and there shall be levied and collected fees therefore in accordance with the following. Number 2, yard waste, the fee collection, for collection of yard waste is $2 a month per, or for each residential and commercial premises. Section 7, severability clause, if any section of, or provision of this ordinance shall be judged invalid and unconstitutional, ah, unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 8, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law.
Move approval, second.
Roll call?
Green.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Busco.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Item number 7, approval of...
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Item number 8, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Cost Share Grant Contract with Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Management for the airport, airport filtration basin project.
This is a $20,000 grant for the basin.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Busca.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Item number 9, Resolution Approving Loan Agreement for Loan of Funds from the CUSB
Historic Downtown Revolving Loan Fund and the City of Cresco to Brady Norman DBA Cornstalk Iowa LLC.
So moved.
Second, yep.
Did you guys want to say anything?
Oh, I got nothing to say. If you don't have a question, let's.
Well, why don't you fill us in?
Um, so bought that wild in the building downtown from the bank. Luckily, they were nice enough to clean the four, 40-yard dumpsters of junk out of there before they passed it over to me. Um, but basically restoring it to what it was before, putting two two-bedroom apartments in the upstairs, one small, one bedroom. Yeah, just one bedroom apartment in the downstairs. And then right now we've got a trinket shop in the front, kind of doing that year-round garage sale type thing. But, yeah, new utilities, new electric in there, all that kind of good stuff, so. Got people anxious to get in there, so. Actually, we've got a, she rocks all, electrics all done. It got first course paint done today, so it's on the back hillside of the renovation already, so.
You know, some of the brick on the alley side is in kind of rough shape.
Yep, that's on the, that's on the docket once we can get some people in there and get some money, money flowing around. That's getting updated and then I also own that brick triplex across from Houdick. There's some brickwork that's going to be done there this summer as well, so kind of trying to lock the brick stuff into, into one project, I guess.
We need to finish the outside of the old Baptist church.
That's also on this summer's project. There's a, there's a lot of summer projects on, on this summer. We got the soffit fascia done last week. It's measured for, for siding and that should be hopefully your short ones.
That tie knot looks really ugly.
I know.
You got people in here now, don't you?
Yeah, that's, that's got three apartments in it that are, that are full, there's provisions for a fourth apartment in that building.
Okay.
Okay, Brady.
Yeah.
Thank you. Who made the motion?
Me.
Ann, okay. Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Greener.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
Number 11, Resolution Committing Fund Balance Resources for General Funds and Special Revenue Funds, GASB 54.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Greener.
Can I ask for a definition?
So basically, if we get designated donations, we have to earmark it for those donations. So like one of them is the RIG-BRI funds. So we can only use those RIG-BRI funds for RIG-BRI. The only way you can use it for something else is if you uncommit it by resolution as well.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Item number 11, Resolution Committing Fund Balance Resources for General Funds and
Special Revenue Funds, GASB 54.
So moved.
Roll call.